Charles meeting order. Tonight, we're gonna be leading the pledge by Mr. Aaron Holiday.
Attention. Absoluted pledge. A pledge which is to the flag of the United States of America and to the Republic which stands one nation under God indivisible with liberty and justice for all.
Thank you, Mr. Holiday. I'd like to welcome everyone to our first, probably first and maybe only, I guess, unless we have to have an additional one, building update, update our building plan and looking at building plans. So, I'm gonna turn it over to Mr. Odom and let him take it from there.
I'm gonna ask Jeff Sandvik if he'll step to the podium and go over which is your third page, some cleanup amendments which would be related to the funding of Smyrna Primary Schools. So, we need to kinda get some of these dealt with.
The Smyrna Primary Amendment is taking eighty-five thousand that is in the Stewart's Creek High School budget that we transferred there last year from the general purpose school fund. And we transferred some money in. I purchased some of their furniture and equipment out of the general purpose school budget because we were afraid we would run short. We didn't. We will have some amount of money left. Since this has already been shared with the city system, it's very easy to just take this eighty-five thousand and transfer it to the Smyrna Primary Project. Our bid came in about sixty-six thousand over our projection, and we had some other little odds and ends. I can go ahead and put the entire eighty-five there. And that, we have already mentioned to the commission, they expressed concern that we didn't have full funding for the Smyrna Primary Project. This amendment will cover that shortfall. And the other pieces, the commission now lets us, we get a dollar figure to start with on our school, and they let us amend it later on in the project. It used to be we were carrying amendments up two, three, four times in the life of a building program, project. We try to do that twice now, kind of as it's wound down. We'll true up the lines where we're under and over. We stay in our total budget, but we fix the line items. So, the rest of this amendment, it cleans up a total, moves from line to line, four and a half million at Stewart's Creek High, nine-hundred-and-fifty-eight thousand at Blackman, and on the Eagleville Project, covering, leaving enough money in to cover the balance of architect's fees for when we do the next Eagleville addition, and leaving a total of a hundred-and-sixty-thousand-six-hundred-ninety-four dollars in that budget until we know what's happening with the next phase. No need to transfer it out and have to replace it down the road. So, our recommended motion is a net transfer of eighty-five thousand from the Stewart's Creek High Building Project to the Smyrna Primary School addition, and to amend the line item budgets in the building program for Stewart's Creek High School, Blackman Middle School Annex, and Phase One Eagleville Addition as presented.
If you remember, because we were while bidding Smyrna Primary, we actually had about a sixty-five, sixty-six thousand dollar increase from our early estimate designs in what the bids actually came in. As the economy picked up, the bids got higher. And so, one of the reasons we were talking about transferring the eighty-five thousand is to make, to cover that increased cost that just came because of the bid cycle. You know, so that's what part of this is. You wanna read the motion then? Are we ready to read the motion? Then you can decide to do. The recommended motion to transfer eighty-five thousand from the Stewart's Creek High Building Project to the Smyrna Primary School Addition Project, and to amend the line item budgets in the building program for Stewart's Creek High Project, Blackman Middle Annex Project, and Eagleville Phase One Addition as presented.
Second.
Put a motion by Mr. Blair and a second by Mr. Holiday. Any further discussion? All in place, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes.
Yeah, I think we are ready now to begin looking at the possible projects that we have, which we kinda call it a two-year plan, but we do a five-year plan, you know, so that we can look out a few years and see what might happen, what's involved. And that'll be on page five. But I'd like to reference you to five A, the sheet immediately beneath it. I did send this to you, it came in this week, our third month build, uh, report, which is our average daily membership. And so, when you look at that number compared to the end of the third month last year, we were up one-thousand-one-hundred-and-eight students. That's interesting because if you might recall, I shared with you earlier, we had a thousand and sixty students over the end of the second month. So, it tells me that we're still growing even though school has started. So, that number is going up. On the far right side, did highlight for you in yellow, any school that grew four percent or more. Some of your negatives over there that you're seeing most often is related to the rezoning for Stewart's Creek High School. So, high schools dropped, obviously, for that rezoning. So, you see that. But right now, through the third month, and the third month is one of the months the State Finance Department uses to determine our BEP funding. It's one of the critical months. So, this is the one that we wait for lots of times. As a school district, we're up two-point-eight percent at the end of the third month. And while that may not be a large number, but when you start having forty thousand students, and you take two-point-eight percent of forty thousand in a year, that's another thousand students. So, our base number is so large now, average daily membership, that begins to stand out. So, as you look at some of our recommendations and projects, this is kind of a reference sheet for you to look back at to see maybe in what areas we might need that. And Smyrna Primary that we were talking about earlier, and we'll take that to the County Commission tomorrow night, or the County Commission has it on its agenda, it's past budget and finance now, so it'll be on the agenda for tomorrow evening. But interestingly enough, there you look at Smyrna Primary this year, you're six-point-six percent over the third month of last year, thirty-five students, which is two more classroom spaces. And that's because your one-to-twenty ratio through most of their programs there. So, kinda lets you see what we're talking about. Let's go back to five and begin to look at the, if we could, the project, Mr. Sandvik's here, Mr. Cardy's here, so just, we can ask almost any questions you would like. The first lines that we have, of course, is one Stewart's Creek High we opened this year, and then the bleachers and ADA modifications. At towards the end of our meeting tonight, he's gonna update you on some of these building projects. He's got some things for you to see and talk about that, but we'll do a follow-up on that. Of course, in the next grouping of items to be completed on August of fourteen, the Blackman Middle Annex, which we have already started, remember that, that's seven-million-four-hundred-thousand. And then, if we get funding tomorrow night, hopefully, the Smyrna Primary Addition for two-million-five-hundred-seventy-six-thousand-two-eighty-eight. I'll, let me throw one thing in here because it's gonna come at the very end. One of the things that we had, it was unanimous in Health and Ed, six to nothing that came out to support the Smyrna Primary Addition. We had two votes that we did not get in the budget and finance, and one of the reasons was it came up in the discussion, Smyrna City will owe us five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand as a tax-sharing part of the liquor-by-the-drink. There was a period of time where it wasn't shared, and so, to catch that up, it's five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand. So, the two people that basically spoke against it in the budget and finance, that's one of the things they spoke about, that they would, wanted to see until they got some assurances that Smyrna was put on that. They didn't know whether they could vote for it or not. They were reluctant to until they got that five-hundred-and-forty-eight-thousand. So, at the end of tonight's meeting, if you choose to act on that, we have an item on here that would tell them, if that money comes in, then we would apply it to the Smyrna Primary. Of course, they're looking at the bottom line, what can we do in new tax monies to, it's gonna cost us, and so, that's what they're looking at. The other piece of it is, and I guess it's anything we can do about it, but if Smyrna chooses to pay it back over a period of three years or five years, that was discussed a little bit, or if they choose to pay it all in one lump sum, and I don't know anything much we can do about that in that particular case, but just an assurance that when it does come in, we can apply it to the Smyrna Primary Project would be our intention. So, anyway, we'll be asking you about that at the end of the year. So, I mean, at the end of the session today, so think about that. So, that's our physical fourteen, fifteen-year projects, look at the Blackman Middle Annex, the Smyrna Primary Addition, and then the major capital repairs farm. So, now, we go out to the next year, and we did not change this. This has been on there for how many years, Mr. Blair, now, I guess? The Eagleville High Addition Phase One. We did Phase Two, but we had Phase One and Phase Two at least, what, five years ago or so, or six years ago, or something like that? So, that one would be in there, and that, the classroom, the cafeteria, the auditorium addition, that's five-million-eight-hundred-and-thirty-one-thousand. Now, interestingly enough, again, if you look back over at the Eagleville, they grew two-point-six percent this year. I was at Eagleville last week, and I walked through, as going through the building, and I started, in the middle school especially, I started counting students in classrooms, and basically, they're two or three over. They can, as long as your total numbers balance, you know, if it's in the K through three, and the four through six, and then the seven through twelve, if they'll balance overall, you can meet the people-teacher ratio for the state. He told me he had probably sixty students on a waiting list wanting to get in their middle school. Now, that's an interesting fact because let me tie that with something else, with this, look down at Rockvale Middle on that five-A sheet. If you look at Rockvale Middle, this year, he grew a hundred-and-seven students, or twelve-point-two percent. So, that leaves us, if he has another year like this, we still have a hun, is it a hundred-and-forty-seven, forty-eight portables? You know, so, we could be in a mess in Rockvale Middle. That's the point, because begin to look at his enrollment, total enrollment now is nine-eighty-four. If you look back over in the column, it's the kindergarten one through twelve and comprehensive development. He has nine-eighty-four this year, at eight-seventy-seven in the same period last year. So, as you begin to look at that, the Eagleville Addition would certainly maybe relieve some of that, and when we talk about rezoning, that's one of the things we're gonna look at with you also, because that's coming up in a meeting in December for us. But if you look down the road, and you're gonna go eleven-hundred students a year, and that area is still continuing to grow, the Rockvale area also, so it just kinda lets us know. Even Rockvale Elementary grew three-point-nine percent.
Mr. Odom, I suspect a majority of those sixty-plus students on that waiting, on the waiting list will come from the Rockvale area.
And that would, that would help us with the Rockvale, you know, considerably.
Yes, sir.
You know, and that's why I say that's somewhat attractive here, that again, our issue is capacity. I mean, that's, you know that. So, what we're looking at with this five-years-in-plan is how can we create additional capacity? And that's what we're doing. One of the commitments we made to the commission, that we would look at places where we can add space. It really makes some schools a little bit larger. Of course, our first foray into this is the Blackman Middle, and the design allowed us to separate to that sixth-grade wing or annex to kinda separate them from the others, that even though the building is getting quite a bit larger and more students there, there's a good way to divide them, because we added cafeteria space, a gym without seating and that sort of thing to get their physical education requirements, and there's science rooms, all of that was built into that. So, we're trying to be creative in developing existing space, you know. We're ultimately gonna have to build some new buildings, and that's gonna show down here, but we're trying to, in the meantime, help with us a little bit by seeing where additional capacity might be. So, again, going back to what we would hope to be finished in August fifteenth would be the Eagleville High Addition Phase One, and then August fifteenth, next Middle or Elementary. Now, we debated this, and let me tell you, here's our issue with this. And I was with Linda Gilbert yesterday. Now, another thing that's interesting you to see, flip back to five A, I know I'm making you jump around, but I'll let you see how we approach this and how we logically think. Look at the very bottom of the page, and you'll see the total enrollment for our fifth grade. You see two-thousand-six-hundred-and-two. Now, at the sixth grade, you see three-thousand-one-hundred-and-thirty-three. What that is, is about five-hundred Muffet's Borough City students that choose to go ahead and come on to Rutherford County in the sixth grade. If you look at the seventh grade, you'll see about another six-hundred. That is, that's the remaining basically Muffet's Borough City student. So, over that two-year period, you're getting about the eleven-hundred students they have per grade, but about half of them. So, I say all that to say, as I was with Dr. Gilbert yesterday, I said, "Dr. Gilbert, you've got me. I've got a meeting tomorrow night, and I've got this dilemma." One is, you're gonna open a new building next fall. New bricks attract kids. Will more students choose to stay through the sixth grade year, or will parents say, "I don't wanna move three times in three years," and more of them actually just decide to come on over in the sixth grade rather than wait till the seventh? And she says, "I've got the same dilemma." Because you just don't know how people will react to that. Because we know over a two-year period, we're gonna get them anyway. But I'm, so, so part of the issue kinda for us in the next Middle or Elementary, we have issues in the Smyrna area also. If you go over on this back, that's five-A sheet again, and look at our middle schools, you know, and you see what's going on, and you're gonna see this even more when we come to our zoning period, we've got middle school issues that there's no one else gonna take any of those students, you know? So, that's going on at the same time. So, a couple of situations there. We're looking at property for both. Now, let me kinda go on down through this, but here's what I want you to be thinking about. We would like to have some input from you tonight of areas that you think we need to look at for new elementary and middle, based on information you've got with the constituents you have, the schools you represent, and the sheets that you're seeing with enrollment. If you wanna give us some ideas, Gary and I, and he's already been looking at places, looking with realtors, we're looking at options, but we'd love the feedback, hear no. You know, an ideal situation for us, once again, is if you can get a tract of land that would allow you to do both an elementary and a middle, that's served us extremely well in recent years. So, it could be a possibility, that could be a good option for us in some areas also. So, just kinda keep that in mind. But let's, any questions about the fifteen, sixteen projects, which includes the Eagleville High and then a new elementary or middle? Now, let me tell you something else we learned last week while we were at the budget and finance. The question is, of course, the county is, they're looking at their judicial building, which is seventy-two-million-dollar project for them, and as they were looking at our Smyrna Primary and all, and that, the other commissioners were saying, "Gosh, how much funding we're gonna need next year, the next year?" And the mayor basically said, while they do have to have design, monies, you know, some things like that, that he felt that the major funding for their new judicial building would probably come in two thousand and sixteen. Well, Gary and I and Jeff kinda looked at each other, because that then throws some of that, and maybe at the county level, at the same time, we're gonna need a school too. So, that's, that's a tough issue for the whole county. But again, eleven-hundred a year, you know, eleven-hundred-and-thirteen, fourteen, if you get eleven-hundred in fourteen, fifteen, eleven-hundred-and-fifteen, sixteen, that's what, you know, that's three thousand more students plus. So, that's an issue. Jeff?
And two of the things that we have faced in sixteen years on being here, two-point-eight percent isn't a particularly fast growth rate for us historically.
No, it is not.
We have one year, we, about seventeen-hundred-and-sixty some?
That was two thousand and six, I believe, in January.
And the commission reluctantly, they tried to, they were unable to fund three schools. We're going to do that, just two schools a year before we know what's in all possible.
Well, the same point that Mr. Odom made is that, you know, two percent of forty-thousand is substantially higher than two percent of fifteen thousand. The other concern I have is, you know, that we continue to stay in the portable business, which is problematic, but on top of that, we have some portables out there that have been with us for a long, long time, and I don't know that they're gonna be able to be moved again, and some of them may need to be given away or disassembled, but, you know, if we have to stay in the portable business, that's problematic, but if we have to buy more to replace some of these older ones, that's even more problematic, moving them around and paying, you know, what is it, sixty thousand for a new double one?
Double lab, you know?
Two classrooms, so...
You know, if you think about it, some of our portables are probably, most of our portables are older than maybe forty percent of our building.
Yes, sir.
The ones behind Thurman Francis, I was there twenty-something years at David Urie, right up there.
Yes, sir.
I don't know that I ever remember when they weren't there.
I think I attended that portable as a student.
Honestly.
I was a streeter with Mr. Corrigan.
But, and we've all expressed a distaste for portables over the years, but, you know, we've got two problems, buying, buying new ones for the increased student load, student load, and replacing some of these that really have aged to the point that we probably shouldn't have children in them. So, that's a double whammy.
And just another very good thing that we can say, the last portables that we bought for the year, when the commission tried, we hoped we'd be able to build three schools, and we had postponed what became the Merle Lake, and that year, that is the last year we bought portables. We had been able to make it by moving, and that's...
Even relocating runs you how much now per portable to relocate about?
Uh, we can spend fifteen thousand.
Because electrical service and handicap ramps and all the things that go with that, plus you're moving. As you're looking at sheet five A, Mr. Hodge asked me something about what schools are at capacity. Here's just kind of a rule of thumb. As you look at that, remember our elementary schools typically, we say eight-hundred's about it, because you've got so many one-to-twenty classrooms, and your PK through three is a one-to-twenty ratio, and the figure that we most often use for our middle is about one-thousand students. We've got several of those over a thousand now, and in some instances, they're already portables there. So, you can kinda look down through there with that kinda in the back of your mind, eight-hundred on your, a lot of your elementaries, and then a thousand on your middle. There's some variations where we added a little different space, and some of those that are already over a thousand or over eight-hundred have portable sitting there. So, you're, I mean, you're counting kids even though the building itself was not that capacity.
Your high schools, two thousand.
Two thousand is what we work with most of the time. That's a, and that's pretty well crowded at those, about seventeen-fifty.
Capacity, I mean, over capacity almost.
I guess, I guess what you're asking us to give you input, next question would be, what do you know that's on the drawing board? In what areas? So, that'll...
Okay, I mean, one of the things that I guess last week was the addition at, out in the Buchanan area off of Joby Jackson. That was gonna be approved, wasn't it, wasn't a little over eight-hundred houses? Ms. Haggard's here from the news journal, she make it, even helped me on that. I think that was a little over eight-hundred houses. You know, and the mixed development is across from the Avenue over there, that was something over four-hundred in that, don't know how many students, some of those will be elementary and in the city. You know, we've had, we talked about, I tell you, when we do our zoning thing, let me ask that, make a note of, we'll have Shane come in also and talk about projecting what's been approved, because he tracks what the, what's approved, building codes, you know, that sort of thing, and what they've done. But, I mean, we had a five in Smyrna, if you remember, that was, at the end of last year, we already had five.
One of the big things, though, is that there's lots all over this west, southwest quarter, all the way back around to the middle, to Rutherford Boulevard, that are approved, but the slowdown, recession got them and put them at a halt. So, there's hundreds and hundreds of lots out there that are ready to go as soon as the economy picks up a little bit, and it looks like it's picking up, but then you've got sites that are being added, like Clark Maple Farm out there is coming in, they're getting ready to put a bunch of housing there, then the Jones Foundation, or Joan Farm out there on the other end of Joby Jackson, around Whitworth Buchanan, getting, they're kinda getting that in process. And then, if you end up with Joby Jackson going all the way around to the Woodbury Highway, then that opens up a bunch of other property in there that is fairly accessible to city sewer.
What about Veterans Parkway? I mean, that is, that is such a broad area. I mean, it just looks, I mean, it's flat, it just looks ready to build on, so...
And there's many, many lots out there around that that are approved.
But the other problem we have is what we've been experiencing here for the last two years is the, is the apartment complexes going up, and, and they develop, I mean, they just go up, you know, in a snap of finger where a subdivision may take five or ten years to build out, but these, these complexes, they're, they're affecting us within a year or two years of being...
A lot of those are transitional houses also, where people are moving into those and stay in a couple of years until they move out into, you know, a single-family dwelling.
It also seems to have a disproportionate impact in the elementary and middle school population as opposed to the high schools. When the apartment complex comes in, we see that, that boost in the elementary and middle school. And again, you know, we think so much of the North Rutherford, Laverne, and Smyrna areas as, you know, wow, it's built out, you know, but there are areas there, and what's being approved, the maximum impact is to be allowed to put in an apartment complex. And so, we see that kind of density occurring, you know, up in that North Rutherford area.
You know, what could happen is almost a tsunami effect, you know, if the economy does continue to improve, and all of these areas start expanding at one time along with the apartment complexes, we really could be in fix.
Well, and that's the data that they've used at the County Commission somewhat in justifying the judicial building. One study that they had showed that by two thousand forty-five...
Thirty-seven, I believe.
Two thousand thirty-seven, six-hundred-thousand population for Rutherford County. So, we're at two-hundred-and-seventy-five-thousand right now, and moving to six-hundred-thousand in the next thirty years.
Well, and you get into six and seven percent growth, seven percent would be three schools.
Mm-hmm.
And that's the tsunami effect that you're talking about, and it's very possible that that could happen.
Yes, sir.
Some of the discussion, as I listened to the planning commissions, and all they talked about was an apartment complex, and we know that the apartment complex typically is less than one student per unit, but the issue is, on two or three lot sizes, if you've got a two- or three-story apartment complex, then that less than one student is multiplied by the height of the building or number of apartments. So, very often, simply because it's apartment, you see it's not gonna have that much impact, and it very well can, simply because of the same footprint of ground for the house and yard in the apartment may produce three units or something. So, that's, that's the, that's the issue.
I think we're all gonna go home and have nightmares tonight.
I guess, before we go any further, I'm just gonna ask Mr. Cardy a question. I know you've looked over all this stuff, probably the staff has, probably just helped the board here. What, you want us to look at it also, but up front here, what are your, what's your thinking?
Home schools for the location?
If y'all've got a rough idea.
I'm thinking, um, Smyrna, forty-one highway area, uh, kind of south of Sam Ridley or even eight forty in that area.
They'll leave, they'll leave which school?
Well, uh, that could be a middle and elementary. So property maybe could fund enough for middle and elementary. Also around from the area that the new elementary school's being built in, from there somewhere around towards Rock Vale area in that southwest quadrant. And then I think you may be faced with, uh, on down in future years, moving on around to the east quadrant over somewhere between Kittrel and Buchanan and that area and maybe doing.
How many, how many years you talking, I mean?
Um, four years over there, five years.
If they extend Joby Jackson, if they were to decide to do that in Rutherford a short period of time.
Oh, yeah.
Over towards the other, then it, it would come very quickly.
It will. Mr. Cardy, how many acres to put a, for a middle school and elementary?
Uh, you need about probably sixty acres, twenty-five.
Just for those two?
And thirty-five. So it'd be sixty for middle and elementary, better off maybe being nothing or, you know, sixty-five range.
Jeff?
A bit of history for y'all. One of the reasons the board moved to more a two-year building planning, that we show more out, the projections, the estimates of what area is going to grow next, you know, go three, four, five years out, we know we're gonna have these students, we don't know where they're going to be, it just depends on how they're developing.
But immediately the apartment complex is one of the things that's been impacting us the most for the last, for the last two years. Would that be right, Mr. Cardy?
It has, particularly in the Blackman area.
In the Blackman Elementary especially.
And we've had, we've had, what, three, the one adjacent to Smyrna High School, one on the Nashville Highway and the one that's being built behind, uh, Lowe's and right on the border of Smyrna and Laverne. So we've had three of, and the one over, uh, old.
Corner of Old Nag, I mean, uh.
Old Ammerville and.
Ammerville and then what's the road that runs up by Smyrna Middle?
Uh, Hazel.
Hazelwood.
Yeah, yeah, right in that area, there's.
Yeah, there's, there's one going up now. So that's four complexes in, in the last two years, just, just in Smyrna proper.
Well, and we just opened Stewart's Creek and yet we noticed that, you know, Laverne High still has over two thousand students and Smyrna is right up against two thousand students. So even though we talk about the impact of the apartments at the, uh, elementary and middle school, the high school element is, you know, not anything we can take, take for granted.
You know, and all likelihood because of the grandfathering, um, there'll be some decline at Smyrna and Laverne, but if the growth tends to offset that, th- then it kind of erases it, you know?
Stay right there, yeah.
And I think, uh, until you see money getting looser, the apartments are going to dominate.
Yes, sir. Yes, they are.
Because, uh, it's hard for people to come up with the down payment and to get into a single family dwelling.
And the banks haven't been loaning, uh, hard for developers. So there's, I know there's a lot of lots that are out there, but there's probably not many being developed, I wouldn't think, yet. Do you know, do you know that?
Uh, there's not a lot being developed, they're still trying to figure out who owns the other ones that are sitting out there.
Right. Is it the bank or, you know, three or four others?
That's a good point. I didn't think of that.
Let's look at fiscal year sixteen, seventeen, kinda, and again, it's kind of getting beyond our two years, but looking at, at that again, um, there, there's very likely to be another, either an elementary or a middle, you know? If you choose a middle in the year before, that's probably gonna be an elementary that year or whatever, but we didn't have much choice other than to kind of put it in there. We are also anticipating in addition to Royal Waldron, try to get rid of those portables, two-story, allow some growth, and, and I think that is pretty much built out. And so if we can get the addition at Royal Waldron there, um, where we, we've already placed portables at Laverne Lake, you know, but between the two, we may could do some rezoning there. And that side, uh, because you're bounded again by the lake, by the Smyrna Airport, properties like that, probably we can handle much of that. Um, the David Urie renovation, that's been on your, uh, target for a number of times because of that entrance area and all. Uh, David Urie grew again this year, they're, they're beginning to grow once again. So you, you picked that up, that was one of the ones that I highlighted at five point eight percent. Again, forty-three students, not much, but it's two classrooms. I mean, that, that, I mean, that's where you issue it when you're trying to count classrooms, cause that's either a portable or another room somewhere. So, uh, trying to deal with that. The other thing that we've had in there for a time is, is the additional, uh, Laverne High and Smyrna High bleachers, restrooms and that concession. And we've kind of pushed that back some, but that's been on your burner. We had to do the ADA thing, but again, to try to make those facilities similar to the, our existing facilities. Then going out to the next year, the fifteenth, you, you literally have to look at a school a year with eleven hundred. You just, you have to think in terms of, that's where you are. You know, um, possibly another middle, uh, you know, in that one. Going out to the, uh, two thousand eighteen, nineteen, this is when probably your new high school at least will show up, maybe even the fourth. Maybe it might have to replace the other. But, um, they like for us to give them four or five years between high schools, because we opened in thirteen now, Stewart's Creek High. And, and whether we can or not, I don't know. Segal High addition there, how many portables do we have at Segal High right now?
Portable.
They, they dropped a little bit this year. I think what you saw for Segal High this year is, this was the last year of growth for Central Magnet School. And they have a pretty significant number of kids from Segal that go to the Magnet. If you remember, we phased it in and last year's graduating class was a small, forty-something, that Central Magnet, where you're gonna be the full, filling that gap in up to the two hundred or so every year. So you'll not see, um, relief coming from Central Magnet anymore, particularly additional relief, I should say, from your high schools. They'll start standing on their own growth. So, so that'll stand.
We currently have ten portables at Segal.
So that's a, I mean, that's kind of an issue there. Which, and, and in the design for Segal, if you remember, uh, the drawings themselves have places for the additions to go. And we talked about that once before, but to try, with the Magnet School and all, to try to handle some of that. See, and it has helped, it's gotten us by at this particular point.
Mr. Odom, we're getting to the bottom of the barrel, uh, for school sites that we can actually add on.
Well, yeah, I mean, it was very limited that we could do. Um, and, and I said this to, to the board, I think, early on, I'm not a big proponent of elementary schools getting much over five to six hundred and certainly middle schools with a thousand or so. But economy of scale, it's really interesting to see. And, uh, I'm, I'm going to do a presentation, just, here's another example, I'm gonna give you, do a presentation for you probably at the next board meeting on the report card. But in, in preparing this, I began to look at other districts around and all. And I saw, I looked at Sumner County with twenty-eight thousand students and I saw forty-six schools. And I looked at Rutherford County with forty-one thousand students and saw forty-six schools. So, I mean, this board has been extremely efficient. Uh, you don't have very many small schools, you're maximizing your space. How does that save money? It saves money because every time you open a new school, there's a new administrative staff, office staff, cafeteria staff, all like that. So, I mean, when you really look at what this board, what you have done, you, and it's gonna show up when I do some of that, how well that you have maximized your space. But as you say, Mr. Berry, we're about to run out of that ability to do that.
What is, uh, I know the figures are new, uh, the cost per student, uh, for us compared to the state, what, what is it now?
This new report card came out today, it's like twelve hundred and seventy-three dollars or something less than state average.
Wow.
Per pupil.
I don't know that you can be much more efficient than that, Mr. Odom.
Well, that, that, that was, that's a significant number when you begin to look at it. I mean, there are few other, there are few other districts spending less, you know, when you do that, but there's some spending a thousand, two more than the state average too, so. But all, all of that will come out as people begin, and we'll talk about that, uh, at our next meeting, so you can see it. The last year is going on out to maybe seventeen, which is eighteen, nineteen, which goodness is beyond us. But very, once again, the next elementary or middle, we put John Coleman in there. And I would love for that to be maybe earlier. They are growing a little bit every year. We've looked at that. Here, here's your issue. If we do something there, because it was built probably in the nineteen forties, wouldn't you say, about the time for Second World War, there, much, much of our building except for we put the library and the gymnasium area that's right out front, which we built and all. Fire marshal regulations and things like that would make it very difficult to attach to the building. And we have not been able in many years in Rutherford County to close a school. And of, but, but there's gotta be a really hard decision made in the next three, four, or five years about John Coleman. Do you replace? Do you go annex, uh, something that's kind of a separate to avoid some of that? And to what extent do you do that? I mean, what size? There's another, uh, in, in our thinking process of developing these, um, another thing that you can begin to think about doing a little bit, um, which probably costs you more in the long run, but less in the short term, is you build more expandable schools. In other words, if you go into an area and you build an elementary school, you build it for five hundred, but you create your, your cafeteria capacity, your office capacity, your geothermal to bring that up to eight hundred in two, three years when it grows there. So we're gonna have to begin to think out of the box about, with so many schools being done, is that a wise decision for us? The problem we typically have, well, when we finish the school, it's almost full. You know, but there is, there, there, there is a potential in some areas that you look at that you could do something like that. Build it with the intent of the next addition at less cost. Now, you've done that a little bit, uh, and Gary's been very good about that in preparing pads, cause you remember much of our pad for Stewart's Creek High was prepared when we did the middle and elementary. Uh, you created a lot of your pad at Rock Vale, you know, there. Some of the work already at Whitworth Buchanan for your high school that will go there. So it's just, again, uh, this board's been quite good at looking ahead in ways that we could spread the cost out over multiple years and times, but that's a possibility.
Mr. Cardy, when you, when you're trying to add, say, twenty thirteen building codes and attach to a, a structure that was built in the forties and fifties, what, what happens there? Because you, you've got a, you've got modern code against.
Many times they will make you bring the entire, uh, job up to the, uh, today's code.
So you're talking about possibly a, a complete renovation of the older part of the facility?
That's correct. And, uh.
Cheaper to build usually than it is to do this.
For, for instance, out at John Coleman, see, we've got a pretty nice gym out there. And we brought the cafeteria up to certain standard, that doesn't, it's still an old part of the building. But, you know, maybe you could go out there and build classrooms, new classrooms and keep the same gym and, uh, maybe keeps a cafeteria. But that, that school is just an old CB balloon frame building that was used for the military purposes, uh, when the base was over there and, and wide open. And so it's, uh, it's got some issues.
Little caveat, uh, seventh, eighth grade, I played basketball in the cafeteria. There were several schools that did not have gyms, so you played, uh, you played in cafeteria. There, you, you couldn't get much arch on the shot, I can.
The, the, the.
Taking a light out.
That school is, uh, I guess, still our highest poverty school percentage, title one. And, and you really wanna do as much for those kids, those teachers there, you know, they've, they've been award schools for high growth and that sort of thing and all. So they're doing a magnificent job. I've been down there this year, spent, could be with a date with them about three weeks ago or so. They're just doing a magnificent job. They, they, they need some consideration too, you know? And I would love to stick it up here quicker, but the growth has been so low a little bit in recent years, cause basically there's nowhere, a lot of places to build, um, that we're looking at having to handle a thousand a year. So in our scenario here, we have to look at where can we put another building or a major addition.
Yes, sir.
So, Mr. Hodge, that's kind of all of it, kind of quickly going over, but just pull anything out and discuss questions that you'd like to ask?
I've just got, I've just got one, I, I, if, if there's some way, uh, Mr. Sandby can perform some magic next year, fourteen, fifteen, uh, is, is look at that, uh, Laverne High School and Smyrna High School concessions and bleachers. I got to go to Laverne this year and, I mean, they're doing the best that they've got, uh, but it's no comparison to what the rest of them have. And I, I just.
You're free to move any of these items, this is yours.
That's just my thinking, cause it, I know this has been on, been on our building thing for several years and, uh, uh, if there's some way you could, uh, work at it and not this next, not this coming next season, but the one after that, move up possibly a year, uh, is what, what I'd like to see, I don't know what about the rest of the board, uh,
Mr. Cardy? Mr. Chairman, could, and I don't know how good Shane's crystal ball is, but if there's, if there's some, some figures that are leading us to believe that this area i- is starting to grow exponentially more than this area, at least maybe we could have, uh, some kind of linear graph that shows us what, what has grown here over the last, you know, maybe the last five years since two thousand eight, since that's when everything pretty much, uh, you know, fell apart. So maybe a five-year trend might give us an idea of, I'm, that may not even be able to be accomplished, but I'm just wondering.
We, we actually asked him this week, Gary did, we were together, we asked him, where do you see, um, possible places to place school in on? He named some areas for us. Of course, he does the, the Geo Mount, you know, we have that contract, we get the same thing the county does and, um, so he's, he has already looked at some of that with growth too. The issue is very similar to what Mr. Cardy says, you've got so many lots already approved and stuff, but that's the, that's a piece of the crystal ball that makes it difficult for us to know where the next one's coming.
And that might be something that he could do in a work session, you know, kind of give us a topical overview, these are the lots that are out there and this is, that's what's happened, has happened over the last year.
You could probably take a zone, although they've changed some over the years, and put a linear graph on those how they've grown. So a particular area.
And maybe that's just something to send us and whatever's best.
Anybody else?
As far as the, uh, the, the money from the, uh, town of Smyrna, does that need to be, do we need to?
We need to act on that. Now, this, at some point, you're probably gonna wanna approve this so we can go to the commission and say, this is, we got this on track. You may, we meet the twentieth, if you want to study this tonight or something like that, or whatever point you desire, but at some point we do need to see, especially we'd like to move, as Mr. Hodge said, some of this, uh, we probably need to approve it roughly.
Well, Smyrna Primary, without a doubt, is extremely critical and anybody that extirled that facility understands that and I'm sure the commissioners that have gone through it. If, uh, if, if it's appropriate, I'd be happy to make a motion to apply that money towards, uh, Smyrna Primary if it's, if it's. If it's, if it's, if it's okay with Chairman Hodge.
We'd fine.
So I need to make an actual motion for, and, and that money was from the...
Mr. Sandvik?
Yeah, you've got a, uh, yeah, come on, cause he said the other one. What Mr. Sandvik is saying, what we're talking about, is one, one of the things, the other night as it came up, the mayor did say, he said, what if the payment schedule comes out to be a three-year or a five-year? So I, I think, a, a, a motion that might be really good for you might be to say that the money from this, this Smyrna that will come in for this liquor bar drink or, uh, would be applied to Smyrna building projects or something like that. Because if it does come in over four or five years, it'll have to be paid for before all of it comes in.
Right.
And, and, and I don't, I don't really, we really be uncomfortable if they came back to us and said, well, can y'all find money in your budget to take it in? Are you following me now?
I totally understand what you're saying, and, and because of the unique nature of that money, being money that we know is coming, and yet it's somewhat unexpected, uh, and, and, and coming in in that regard, would it be more appropriate? Because Smyrna Primary and the addition there, uh, is something that Mr. Sandvik has indicated to me as, as a county and, and our, our funding body, and we have had it on the agenda for quite some time. It's almost like we were prepared for that. And yet now there's this additional money, which may come in a, in a strange payout or something like that. I almost have heard this evening that our most urgent need may be to earmark that money for the replacement of portables. That as our system grows in an unexpected and unpredictable way, we need to replace some portables that are really gonna serve us poorly. Uh, and if we had that money that was earmarked for portables, then at whatever rate it came in, we could intentionally spend it there, uh, and, and, and get a, a, a safer, uh, flexible classroom.
But we don't know at this point if all that money may come in at one time or over a two-year period. And Smyrna Primary may hinge on that money being committed to that project. And so I would, I would, I would err on the side of, of, of appropriating that money towards that product, that project to, uh, to ensure that, that the county commission knows we're doing our due diligence and helping them with the funding. And I would, I would prefer to go ahead and earmark that money for Smyrna Primary. Cause there, it is possible that it won't come in in an aberrant way, that it may come in in a year or maybe it... And it's, that Smyrna Primary...
Jeff, when would, uh, when would they, when would you know?
Lisa Nolan, the mayor, they've been talking with them, but he actually recommended to the budget finance that they fund this total amount because of that. But their insistence and, and from a lot, commissioners from the Smyrna area and Laverne and some was, that when you do get that money, that it be projects down here at least. But the mayor recommended they fund the whole amount.
Well, we've got a project on the books of nine hundred and ninety-five thousand dollars for the Laverne High School, Smyrna High School bleachers and, and restroom concession area that our chairman has expressed he'd like to see moved up. And, you know, at the same time, you know, is something specific to that area. Again, I come back to, without this money ever being a part of it, we've passed health and ed, we've passed budget, and we're well on our way. We'll know tomorrow night if Smyrna Primary is gonna get what it needs and deserves and has been planned for three-plus years to get the security impact that it needs, as well as, you know, improvements to the cafeteria area and classroom space, all of which has been planned and, and carefully allowed. I don't want to lose the opportunity. Smyrna Primary is essential to take place. If it requires that money going there, then so be it. But this is a unique opportunity with that money, and I, I just don't want to put it at the first project. I want to put it at the best project.
I, I tell you what I think Jeff and I are gonna be asked tomorrow night. Has your board committed that if this money comes in, that it can be applied to this project? I'm just being honest with you.
And I've, I've heard that also.
Very simply, that's the question, because they've expressed that to me on the personal note, so I, I, I'd be very surprised if that's not the way to be put.
It's appropriate, Mr. Chairman. I would like to, for the chair to entertain a motion that that money, uh, be applied to the Smyrna Primary project. Because I, I think it is critical in that potentially the vote tomorrow night will, uh, depend on that commitment from this board for that project.
What, okay. You've got a motion?
Second.
Got a second by Mr. Young. Open for discussion now. Uh, I guess my question would be, and I'm in favor, uh, my question would be, uh, I guess to Mr. Sandvik, what if this thing gets strung out for four years, five years? The project's already done. Uh, and you paid for it somewhere and, and you get this money in, so.
What if your motion said first priority Smyrna Primary or... Or I don't know how to say it, other Smyrna project or something, you know, I don't know.
That...
Is that what you're gonna say?
I mean, if we could, could say, first priority Smyrna Primary and second priority, if, or what, I don't know, I don't know how to word that. I'm sitting here in my mind trying to think how to do it.
Yeah.
That it'd still be dedicated to something in Smyrna, cause that's, that's kind of what they're looking for.
Yeah, now, I really like that. If we can make the, the, uh, funding to the Smyrna Primary project as funds are available, so as we immediately accomplish the Smyrna Primary, whatever funds become available, we apply to that. And then if additional funds become available in subsequent years, we apply those to the concession need to get Smyrna and Laverne High School at the same level as the other high schools. Now we've accomplished something.
Well, and I agree. I think we need to be careful about being too specific for anything else. Uh, I think Smyrna Primary would be first than, like you said, any other, uh, any other project. You know, possibly on the northern end of the county. Well, it'd have to be since that's, since that's Smyrna money, I guess, and it's not have to stay in there, so.
How about if you, uh, wrote a motion to say that it would be dead, as it came in, it would be dedicated to the, uh, building program with the first priority being Smyrna Primary?
I like that, but... Do I need to go through the, I need to go through rescinding and, and going back, or can we go with, what, Mr. Clardy?
So it's fine.
Okay, so we'll, we'll go. Mr. Young, is that good with you?
It was fine, yeah.
Read, read, would you read the motion, Ms. Marcus? Or you know?
Okay, yes. Uh, Mr. Blair moves secondly by Mr. Young. Let the funds be dedicated to the building program with the first priority being, uh, Smyrna Pri- Primary Project.
Everybody good with that?
Very good.
Any further discussion?
Thank you, Mr. Clardy.
All in favor, say aye.
Aye.
Any opposed? Motion passes. Anything else, uh, in regard to this?
This, we'll just need your marching orders sometime about how the priorities as they're listed here. And again, don't you typically approve this as a board?
Yes.
So, and again, you may want to look over it another, the week, and just bring it back at a subsequent meeting or something like that. Cause this is a lot here, and I, I'm not pushing for it tonight at all.
Is there something that maybe we could, is it next Wednesday we have our next? So would it be appropriate, Mr. Chairman, for us to have from now to then and, and go back at that time?
If you would, Ms. Marcus, let's, let's put this on the agenda, and, uh, Mr. Holiday?
Uh, if I could, Mr. Odom, if you could explain a little bit more. You mentioned the Roy Waldron addition, and, and yet we talked about the facility there maybe being at capacity, and then there was conversation about Laverne Lake and, and different areas and rezoning. But are we looking at, when we see this, uh, February fifteen, June fifteen, August sixteen, those dates right there, an addition at Roy Waldron?
That would be proposal. How many portables exist there right now? I think you brought your portable sheet. I don't have mine sitting in front of me.
Roy Waldron has six portables.
They, they have six portables.
Classroom.
And the addition we were thinking was going to be, how many rooms? It's a two-story. How many rooms did we say in our proposal? We actually had Binkley Garcia look at that for us. So it was...
There is, uh, one, two, three, four, five, six, seven. Hang on one second. Eight, nine, ten, eleven, twelve, thirteen, fourteen, fifteen classrooms.
So we're, we're saying it could be eight to nine additional. Now again, much of that's a one to twenty ratio.
Right.
So even when you say that, that's a lot of rooms, that's not a lot of kids. You know, when you multiply nine times twenty or so like that. So, uh, maybe we could give them that computer lab and some other things too that we really need to do there. It's a Title One school. That does take a little extra capacity too. So it is built, to be built within mine, additional capacity. Everything we're doing is also to provide additional capacity, not just simply replacement.
Well, our priority for, for a number of years have always been trying to put student safety as our first priority, and getting them inside bricks and mortar is, is a, is a great way to, for that security and safety.
You know, it...
I'm sorry, go ahead, Quay.
I was looking at Smyrna Middle here. We don't have them on the, on the radar as far as doing anything capital-wise.
We do not at this time. But if you see something that you want to do, I mean, we could put it in here somewhere if we do it. What were you thinking about?
I just noticed there are eight portables, and then also there, uh, the numbers also tunnel up to be around a thousand students, so. I'm afraid we're gonna get into a problem right there if we don't put something in play.
That, that's why we are thinking, one of the things for a middle school, and I know you haven't been that long since you built Stewart's Creek Middle, but your Rock Springs Middle is pretty much at capacity. Your, your Smyrna Middle is pretty, is over capacity. Uh, and your Stewart's Creek is at capacity. And you do not have room at Stewart's Creek Middle and Elementary to add this addition. You know, basically we do not. You look, you, you know what the footprint looks like. So one of our thoughts was that if we do, somewhere in that south of Smyrna area or somewhere in, in an arc around there, we may literally have to rezone, build it away from them rather than do that. There's not a lot of room there to do an addition either, easily.
How much, how much land is, do we have at the Smyrna Elementary? I know we're, we lease some of it to the Smyrna Parks and Rec.
Uh, Smyrna Elementary, we have, I don't, I don't recall exactly how much, but I know there's a couple of ball fields back there, and there's that barn. So we do actually have room to put an annex back there if we needed to. We would have to, um, get out of the lease, and I'm not sure how long that is, maybe a...
Some is floodplain, in that lower end.
Some of it's in the floodplain, though. Was there, I wanna say there's thirty plus acres.
I want, I would have a number of forty acres total capacity.
I wanted to say thirty-nine.
Forty, forty-five, okay, yeah.
Use, usable?
I wanna say a part of that was floodplain that could be built up.
Okay.
Yeah, you just have to compensate. You'd have to take whatever you're building up out of the floodplain.
And I don't know, maybe that would be too close, but it, it's property that we already have, so, you know, it, it's at least something to consider.
Well, when Mr. Hodge asked a question earlier, that's the reason I went into that Sam Ridley, Amerville Road, forty-one highway, eight forty area right through there to get some pressure off of all of those schools right through there.
The other issue it's Smyrna Middle too, if you're not gonna go out and build a separate building, you're again connecting to a, a building that's a little bit older, so it's, it's a little bit of the same colundrum you run into with the John Coleman situation, although not as old a building. But still, the code changes and that sort of thing, so.
The Brown's Chapel area, would that help any, or is there any room out there, do we have any land on that?
Gary and I have discussed this. There, there is, uh, not at the Brown's Chapel site. There is some land in that area that, uh, I don't, I can't tell you how quickly, but there is certainly some open land there that could be considered for another elementary middle acreage, uh, that you could do. Of course, that, that becomes a pretty good cascade , um, all the way out of Smyrna, which you'd have to then throw some of them probably towards Stewart's Creek. And then you'd be taking people pretty close to Stewart's Creek and...
I was thinking about the Blakeman area too, cause that area keeps growing. We're still gonna need room to...
You could actually put a high school in there too.
There, there's, there's some land out there that could, you could do another three-school complex if you so desired. That has, just hasn't hit the radar for fast growth from any of these planning commission things. You know, you look at the Joby Jackson, you hear the Veterans Parkway and all, but that, that's another area that will grow.
I'm concerned.
Eight forties there, you know?
Veterans, uh, you know, it just looks so attractive for, for build-out. I, I mean, I've been down, down it so often, and it's just, it's just a very attractive...
They're, they're beginning to complete that section from Barfield over to, of Veterans now. Just started working on it.
Yeah. As we continue to design, uh, one of the things that I noticed in the exhibition hall at the state school board convention that we, we just attended, were a number of, uh, architects that were touting tornado shelters and, uh, storm-proof design. And there are some federal grants that they were saying are available. And, you know, as we're working on things, you know, we certainly wanna, uh, look at the possibility of being able to incorporate that wherever we can, particularly if we can do it at no cost, uh, through a grant program. Uh, so I, I raise that.
Let's tell our, let's ask our architect about that.
That can help us.
He gets down to it. I think he can have the certification.
We now, of course, dedicate the hall areas on the bottom floor to, uh, as a safe area because of the reinforced masonry of the wall and then the slab over the top on the bar joint, which we had state fire marshal look at those and various engineers and things, and, uh, dedicate those as safe areas, and that's one reason we line them up in the halls in those areas.
Excellent. Is there a...
But it might be that we're already doing it, but we can get money for it.
Well, and there's some retrofit products, and as we're looking at maybe renovating or, uh, you know, repurposing space in schools, it may be that those specific products allow us to at a low cost go in and reinforce an area in an existing structure.
Is there a, excuse me, is there a resistance, uh, scale for torna- uh, tornadic activity for a structure? I mean, is it rated like earthquake and, and things like that, that this, this structure, this area should withstand an F?
Uh, there is, but it has to do with lateral movement. You know, how much lateral movement will it resist? Uh, I don't know. I can get some information on that.
I was just curious if there was any kind of...
And how much wind it will take.
Yes, sir.
Uh, and that's calculated by the speed of the wind and the surface area that it's hitting, those types of things, so.
Cause that, uh, cause there was a school that was completely demolished in Oklahoma City tornado, but, but I don't know how old that structure was, so.
Yeah, I don't know. I can't remember. I remember it was, uh, I think it was a masonry building also.
And in that Midwest area, because of the community reaction to that, there are legislators that are, are taking steps and, and putting in place, uh, mandatory requirements, either for new construction, or some communities are even saying existing construction. If it's a school, you've got to go back and retrofit. That is creating a catalyst that is, is really making these federal grants, uh, from FEMA and, and elsewhere, uh, op, an opportunity. And I think that, you know, it may be something that we can take advantage of.
And I also think that they determined that a lot of those death... And I also think that they determined that a lot of those deaths that drew with drowning because the basement filled up with water and broken water pipes and that kind of things, they carried them in the basement for a safe area, but they were flooded.
Oh, wow, good.
Anybody else?
Thank you, Mr. Clardy.
Number four, a status update.
Okay, Blackman Middle Edition, we're excavating out there, putting in footings, and also we've got the road cut around the perimeter of the building, and the pad is just about finaled out now, and we're also putting in stormwater. Just show you some pictures, these were taken earlier this week. Of course, this is inside, they're having a lot of what they call cutters, which are large rocks that are in that area that they're having to move out, you can see some of the grating here, that's part of that road bed, and of course, they're started putting in footings, and that's still reinforcing in the footing, getting ready to tie the uprights in on this two before enforcing, storm, storm pipe. And then Smyrna Primary Edition, we're proceeding at this point with planning the portable moving and those types of things, going ahead and getting the electricity located, and then there's, one of them is used for pre-K, it has to have sewer and water put back in it, so we're going, proceeding with that, we're working with Dr. Vogel to try to figure out what's acceptable locations and what's not, and contact all the utility people with that. I wanted to just talk about maintenance, work ticket for a minute, we have, as you know, an excellent maintenance department here at Rosedale County, and that's headed by Kenneth Curley, and Kenneth does an excellent job in scheduling his guys and keeping them on task, we have a lot of talented contractors over there that are working for us. We have, from July one until now, we processed thirty-four hundred and eighty-one work orders, completed three hundred, I mean, three thousand two hundred and sixty-two, and we have in progress two hundred and nineteen, and then you can see them by department as they've done, for instance, construction four sixteen, we've had three hundred and ninety doors and on down the line.
The roofing amazes me, it's because of the money the county set aside, that property tax rate, because with the number of buildings that we have, to have no more roofing things than that is just phenomenal, it tells it, that your people are working ahead and planning ahead and avoiding this, it's just amazing.
It is amazing.
We don't even have a maintenance roof crew, we've got people who are capable, if we had to use them in an emergency situation, but it's a nightmare, you remember, I know Mr. Hodge did, and you do too, well, Mr. Blair of Oakland, ten years ago.
Especially the library.
You'd had more than forty there, wouldn't you?
So, then technology, there, there's currently six thousand two hundred tickets, and we've done five thousand four hundred and seventy-seven of them, and five hundred and forty-three are open at this point, and those could be anywhere from fixing a mouse to replacing a server.
Can I ask what, one unassigned one, which...
I don't know. I guess I should ask that question, I'm afraid, I'm afraid to ask.
So, my need compared to the rest of, wow.
And it's probably something that, you know, it could be a number of things, that it could be not important.
I would say it's probably not important.
It could be seen as a problem from one perspective, but not as a problem from someone else's perspective.
I'll make this quick, but I can remember talking with Mrs. Holton at Eagle Bowl seven years ago, and that she had to be careful then to place an order because she was worried that they may come before she was ready, and years before, you know, she'd make it in anticipation that somebody would show up, and so, since, since all of your people have been involved, they, they don't make the request until they need it because they're afraid that you'll come.
And of course, Steve Solomon is running the technology systems and hardware, and he's done an excellent job, and also, since we have Mr. Duke Trey in there as instructional technologist managing that, we're, lines of communication are open, we're just talking, getting a lot more work done. And then, we also have cabling, we have a cabling crew and projector crew, and we have work orders with a hundred and eleven turned in this year, and ninety-one of those are complete, and twenty of those are in progress in cabling, and then projector, work orders of eighty-eight, with fifty of those complete and thirty-eight in progress, and some of those are bought through the technology department, some of them are bought through the schools, but we've made a commitment three or four years ago that if they would get the computer, we'd make sure, or I mean, the projector, we'd make sure they got installed for them, and we've made a lot of progress, there's not very many classrooms now without a projector and a...
Let me tell you something, I have Stewart's Creek Elementary today in Washington, so we had a teacher there using her iPad, and she had the little Apple connector for her overhead projector and all, but she could walk around the room, kids were doing projects, she could take her iPad, click it, and then, you know, hit a button or two, and it was up on the screen, look what Johnny is doing here, this is how his project is developing now, the only thing was she was using her own iPad, we had her borrow an iPad, she's using her own, so, there's some amazing stuff going on.
Yes, sir.
These are our capital projects that the, you know, county commission and Board of Ed worked on a few years ago to get this in place where we get a certain amount of money every year, and we get around two point two to two point five million each year, and I think that's from the development tax, isn't it?
That is from, it was originally five cents on property taxes, like four a quarter, and huge rate raises.
Yeah, so, right now, we're working on Blackman High School roof, that roof actually wasn't installed properly, and we've had problems with it the entire time, and we're correcting that now, finally been able to get a break from some of the other roofs to get this one done. Paving and striping, we did a twenty thousand dollar project out of Oakland High School, and instead of putting pavement down, we put a good gravel base down and tar and chipped it, and when we get an opportunity sometime, and it's working good in the parking lot right now, but when we get an opportunity, we'll go around and put a couple of inches of pavement on it in years to come. Eagle Bowl High Sewer, we allotted two hundred and ten thousand dollars for us to make the corrections and the connections to the city sewer out there, and of course, at the time I put this in, we changed from putting in a new system at Buchanan Elementary and moved these over because we thought they were really going to get that in there pretty quickly, and it's still not come, come up yet, so hopefully, before too much longer, we'll be able to do that. Gymnasium seating, we have that ordered for Oakland and Riverdale, and I believe it was four to, three to four months was the lead time on those because they're having to be safely manufactured. And window replacement, I believe that the central middle annex is the only building in the system that we lack putting thermopane windows in, so we're in the process of doing that now, and we've replaced a lot of windows over the last few years. And then, these are ones that I just went through, they're just a write-up of those, I went ahead and went over them, and Smyrna and Laverne High School, ABA bleachers, those are all completed, and I just want to show you a few pictures of the roof, and, you know, just looking at this roof, you can tell it's a quality roof, I mean, it's neat, it's put on straight, it's good and tight, you know, we've changed this white roofing so we don't have as much solar gain on it, and a lot of the heat's reflected off of it, and it will last longer than what we've been, been putting on. You can see this, and I think that's mainly over the gym area. Pinnacle Roofing just does an excellent job, and we have them under contract right now, and they're renewable for a year, for the next four years, I believe, after this year. And here's what the roof looked like before they get started with it. And then I've got a couple of pictures here of the seating, this is at Smyrna, and this can be extended up when we do the concession. This is Laverne, Smyrna chose not to get painting, painting on theirs, get their school colored, but Laverne got the school colors on there. Very nice, nice big. And then, Mr. Odom, we're back to other business, does anyone have any questions that I can answer?
That's the action you've already taken, it really don't do you...
I got ahead of the game, I'm sorry, Mr. Odom.
No, that's fine.
Anybody got any questions?
Excellent presentation, thank you, Mr. Clardy.
If everyone would take what we got here, next week's meeting, we'll have it on the agenda, if you want to make any adjustments or whatever, bring them, bring them at that time, and hopefully, we'll try to get something ironed out at least for two years, even though we've got five years listed here, if that's, if that's good with everybody.
Yes, sir.
We've just found that commissions sometimes, if we don't go out four to five years, they say, well, you didn't, you didn't let us know or anticipate that this was coming, and that's, even though you don't know exactly where it'll be, you just kind of know by growth, it'll be there somewhere, and so, we find it advantageous to go ahead and kind of put it out front and say, you know, we'll work on it.
Yes, sir.
It's so advantageous, reaching out to that four or five-year plan, not the least of which is, it extends beyond any of our terms or any of the terms of the funding bodies, so it's, it's not just something that is a pet project for any one individual, but it's really what's right for the community.
Well, give us a roadmap of where we're trying to get to, pre-planned, being right.
Anything else? If there's nothing else, we'll see everybody next Tuesday, we're done.